All right. Welcome back from break, everyone. I'd like to call the Winchester School Committee meeting to order at 6:03 PM. So our first item of business is public comment. So, you know, as always, public comment shall be for a period of 20 minutes. Generally allows for about six or seven people to speak. Any citizen wishing to speak before the committee shall identify themselves by name and street and shall speak no longer than three minutes. All remarks will be addressed through the chair of the meeting. Public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between citizens and the committee, so committee members aren't going to respond. We're here just to listen. Public comment is a citizen's opportunity to express their opinion on issues of school committee business. Written comments longer than three minutes may be presented to the committee before or after our meetings for the committee members to review and consider at an appropriate time, and we do read all of the submissions that come in. Remarks can be submitted to school committee at winchesterps.org. Ms. Bergstrom has agreed to be our timekeeper. Do you know if we have people signed up?
There was nobody on the list. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone here for public comment?
Yes.
Okay, we have a sign-in list over here. If you want to...
Do we all need to sign in then?
It just helps us know where we ordered them and what your names are. You may go first and I'll just...
Do you need a microphone for that table? Oh, we'll give you a microphone. Just one moment. Thank you, Michaela. Whenever you're ready.
Whenever you're ready.
Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Amy Poftak, 230 Mystic Valley Parkway. I'm part of the group that brought concerns about literacy to this committee in 2021. From the very beginning, we've been asking for a comprehensive approach to literacy, one that's consistent across all the schools, one that provides the teachers with the tools they need and builds their capacity, and one that takes a systematic, structured, and explicit approach to not just phonemic awareness and phonics, but to vocabulary comprehension and building knowledge. Curriculum is just one piece of the puzzle, but it's an important one, and I recognize that no curriculum is perfect. But how is it possible that we're still debating keeping Lucy Caukens' units of study in the year 2024? Nearly 30 states have rejected Lucy Caukens' approach, and several have banned it outright. Columbia University has dissolved the organization behind it. And more importantly, Lucy's workshop model is not working for a third of our kids, and especially our most vulnerable learners, where the disparities are significant. If a building contractor the district used had been banned from doing business in 30 states and jettisoned by its parent company, would you continue to use them? Or would you say, maybe we should look into this and make some changes? I think that's the part that I find the most difficult, which is the lack of acknowledgement that this is a highly problematic program, and also the lack of curiosity about the high-quality alternatives that exist today. The bottom line is that our teachers and our students deserve a better curriculum as part of a comprehensive and consistent approach to literacy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Thank you. I'm Heather von Mering. I am from 23 Loring Avenue, and I have a parent of five children. The term evidence-based curriculum or programs when referring to literacy is widely used, but origins come from the term scientifically-based reading research. Scientifically-based reading research is defined in the United States national laws. Units of study, which is inside this district, is not evidence-based, also known as does not have scientifically-based reading research supporting it. Units of study has not been, and this is the quote from the national laws, "research supplying a rigorous, systematic, and objective procedures to obtain valid knowledge relevant to reading development, reading instruction, and reading difficulties." It has not been accepted by a peer-reviewed journal or approved by a panel of independent experts through a comparably rigorous, objective, and scientific review. Units of study is not evidence-based. Saying it does not make it true, and sharing studies that are not independent nor rigorous does make it any more accurate. These are the requirements of the National Every Student Succeeds Act, which supports Lynch Elementary financially as a Title I school. Units of study, balanced literacy, readers workshop, whatever you want to call it, Lucy Caukens' leftovers, does not meet these requirements. I am asking that units of study be removed from our district and replaced by curriculum that aligns with the national laws on literacy and DESI literacy guidelines. We have all heard the stories of how units of study place children in this district in an emotionally abusive situation, especially the ones with dyslexia. If you have not, you can watch Voices of Winchester on YouTube, which has soundbites from parents and children at prior school committee meetings expressing their situations. As the focus was on dyslexia, the general education curriculum was addressed in parallel in those comments. When parents spoke up in many different forms, including myself, to try to notify the people with the power to what we were seeing, we were mocked in internal emails and texts. As our names or our children's names were used, it showed up in our children's school records. That curriculum has harmed children who are still in this district. In their honor and to respect their stories and experiences, I am asking you to remove any versions of Uniteds of Study, units of study, and replace it with a curriculum that is supported by scientifically-based reading research. As I expressed to Dr. Hackett in a private conversation, it is my personal non-negotiable. It is the only way our community can begin to heal from what has happened. Finally, administrators have been doing political activism in trying to gain support for continued usage of Uniteds of Study at the state level. It is their choice, their opinion, and their right. However, as I believe all voices should be welcome, I do ask that the school committee make a very clear policy that district employees should not be using their employee titles, giving false representations of the viewpoints of the district as a whole when doing personal political activism. Their actions were extremely disrespectful to the families and children of Winchester Public Schools, especially those that units of study has harmed. Thank you for the gifts of your time.
Thank you. We have other people on the sign-in list. Alton?
Hello.
Hi.
I am Hillary Eden. I live at 5 Dean Road. I did not come with prepared remarks. In fact, I came here kind of on a lark because I saw this on the Facebook page, but would love to give my two cents. I have a first grader and preschooler, both at VO and Morocco, have found the teachers in the district to be absolutely phenomenal. And despite the absolutely phenomenal teachers, the curriculum doesn't match up. My daughter is autistic and ADHD, does not have diagnosed dyslexia, and was persistently coming home from kindergarten in Melissa Testa's class with concerns around her progress with reading. She wasn't making any progress. And I kind of thought, okay, I'll bootstrap it. I'll go get teacher kid to read in 100 lessons of phonics. And who knows? Oh, my goodness, 40 days later, 40 straight lessons later of 10 minutes a night was reading and is now reading at higher than her grade level. Like, I shouldn't have to do that. No parent should have to do that on their own time. No parent should have to pay for tutors. No parent should have to supplement what is supposed to be like the basic right of like child education, right? I didn't think twice about it because I've always been somebody who just takes care of problems when they pop up, right? But now I'm starting to like look around my friends' kids and being like, okay, what's going on here? Like, being able to read in public school, like, that's not supposed to be something that you should have to fight for, right? You read with your kids to enjoy with them in the evening. You shouldn't be having to teach them the things that they should be learning as a basic part of school, right? It's like ridiculous. It's criminal that our teachers are not being supported well. So, my two cents.
Thank you.
Hi. Thank you. I also do not have prepared remarks. My name is Taylor Tinmouth. I live at 12 Old Lime Road. I'm a member of town meeting, and I sat in town meeting my first session last spring, and I heard, I heard talk of, wow, Winchester, number 10 high school in the country, or in the state. Isn't that amazing? And I thought, yeah, this is so great. I'm really proud to live in Winchester. This is, this is fine. And the reason I was looking for that confirmation is I have three kids. I have a seven-year-old, a five-year-old, and a two-year-old. And my seven-year-old has ADHD, and his psychologist said, I really don't think you should send him to Winchester Public Schools. We've had several, I've had several patients who are there. He will not be supported. And I did a little bit more research, and we ended up sending him to private school because we heard time and again about concerns. And so I have a typical five-year-old, and I sent her and thought, you know, we're going to wait and see. But I know that there are other families in Winchester who are fortunate enough to be able to pay for private school and are making a choice not to send their children. And I also don't want to live in a town where that's what it is, where people with means can pay for tutors or can pay for private school and then can make the ranking really great, and families that don't have those means or don't have the time to come to a meeting or do research on the side and be listening to podcasts and realizing, we've got a big problem here. There are so many families that are just going along and being told, it's okay, it's okay, and then in third grade, finding out their kid can't read. I don't want to live in a place like that at all. I want better for all of our kids, and I'm just like truly sickened that with 30 states that have made a statement, we can't just make that statement as a town. And I get it. My, my child is receiving an amazing education at a fancy, fancy-pants private school in Concord, and they are using some of the things, you know, they have leveled readers, they have some of this, but there's also 10 kids, and he's also getting incredible phonics, and he's also getting a whole package education. I understand that some of the things in units of study are not awful. Like, I don't think anyone here wants our kids have something awful, but I think we need a show of commitment. It's going to make everyone here feel better, and the hundreds of people who you may, they're talking about it. They're there. I don't know where the realtors are. I think this is a huge problem for our property values, and people are talking about it. I just want you all to know, even if you're not scared by this group of people, there are hundreds of people with worries, and we need a show that you hear us instead of signing a petition that feels like a slap in the face.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Christine Cronin. I live at 16 Hutchinson Road. This is my daughter, Isla Kelleher, future VO student. I just wanted to take a few minutes to talk. I often talk, or have had the opportunity to talk on the curriculum side of this work as it's what I do professionally, but I just wanted to elevate the voice of teachers for a minute. A few weeks ago, before the break there, VO on skates happened, which is an awesome activity, loved it, and I had an opportunity to do that with two of my sons who go to VO. And as I did my circles around the rink, multiple educators came up to me and said, thank you. Thank you for what you're doing. Thank you for saying something. We don't feel like we can. And I think this is really important as Dr. Hackett lays out the plan moving ahead, is that we talk a lot, and I've heard a lot from district folks over the past four years, that we trust teachers and that we want teachers to make the best decisions for their kids. And we don't have a curriculum. These are the words I hear from district officials here. And what I hear from teachers is, I have to ask. So when I advocate for my children to have research-based instruction, I hear, I have to ask. I have to get permission. So I posit to the group, to whom are they asking permission? If we trust them and we let them use any materials they feel are right for their children, why do they have to ask permission? When I ask them, are you getting the support that you need? I do professional development for teachers. Why do they look down? Why do they look away? Those are questions that we have to ask in this process. Because we have teachers who feel unsafe to speak their mind, who feel they have to ask permission to do the right thing, and they are doing the right thing. They are trying really hard. They're doing it with their own money. They're doing it with their own time, and they don't feel supported. Some of them feeling like they're doing it in a clandestine way, and that should never, ever be the case. So I just wanted to take this minute, as we think about what the plan is forward, to elevate that voice and that reality. This isn't a place where teachers feel that they are empowered to make the best decisions for the children that they are serving. That is not my experience in three years here. Amazing educators trying really hard to do the right thing and not feeling like they can in a public way or in a supported way. We have to do better.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there others on the list?
I think on the other list.
All right. Well, thank you very much. At this point, we'll close public comment. We do appreciate everything that you've shared tonight and certainly people who've written in as well. We do read all of the emails and appreciate, you know, all of the concerns here.
Let me make a quick point of information. Since Heather and Amy, it looked like they were both reading some prepared remarks. If they wish, can they forward those to you or to Dr. Hackett, just so they're attached to the minutes?
Yeah, if you want to forward those to the school committee at winchesterps.org, we can do that.
Yes.
All right. Well, thank you very much. All right, the next item on our agenda is a superintendent's report.
Great. Well, good evening, everybody. Good to see you all. Everyone had a decent break, got a chance to be with family and friends and unplug a little bit. I only have a couple of things tonight under the report, and a couple of kind of late-breaking things. One is that the high school gymnasium project, which you, you heard some of, there were some developments over the course of the last few days, actually, prior to this agenda being posted, and I'd like if Mr. Nixon could just speak to that because you're more closely connected to it than I am at this point.
Sure. We want you to do that now.
That would be great.
So the committee will remember, it was December 12th, we had a presentation from our athletic director, Margaria, Chris Blesson from Tape Architects on the proposed reorientation of the gym and the need to put the new floor down. For those behind me who are new to this, the floor was not replaced when we did the high school renovation project. When we started the project, the floor was about four and a half years old. It was basically a new floor. Now it needs to be replaced. That information was provided to the board. The board has been interested in this really since last summer, as I think you're all aware. The project, the development of that conceptual study and the cost estimate did not line up with the capital evaluation cycle over the summer because we didn't get that report until the end of August. So I'm pleased to share that the board actually voted unanimously to commit $1.3 million in ARPA funding towards the project, and they've directed management to develop an article for the spring warrant that seeks in addition $960,000 in overlay funds and then some amount of free cash to close the gap that's needed. There are, as I understand it, some ongoing conversations with some potential private fundraising, which would all, of course, be welcome, but that sort of remains in process. So there's support there at the board table for that. In addition, there was also a separate motion and vote to take an additional $100,000 out of ARPA to actually get the design process going again because time is money. And should this find support at town meeting in the spring, there isn't time to get the work done this summer, but it could get started this summer. We're thinking maybe August, have a bid set June, July, be started in August. This would impact the high school's fall operations, but our athletic director feels confident he can make it work, Michaela, in the fall, and the goal will be to have it done in the winter. So that's great news. And management just authorized engineering and planning yesterday to get going on the RFP process that's necessary and so forth. So as Dr. Hackett said, very late-breaking after the agenda was put together last week. That's helpful news.
Oh, good news.
Fantastic.
Yeah, it'd be great.
Mr. Nixon, do you know how they're going to run the winter sports without, how are they going to run winter sports without a gym flooring, like basketball, volleyball?
The plan is it will be done by winter.
Done by winter?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, but, but in progress in the fall.
Okay.
So that's why Mr. Ria feels he can make it work. He also pointed out, you know, we lost that whole wing for a year during the three-phase construction.
Yeah.
So if, heaven forbid, it pushes even deeper into the winter, you know, we've dealt with it before, but there's pretty high confidence we could get it done in time.
Thanks.
And the only other thing, building-related also, if you haven't, we have Lynch update on the agenda tonight. You can see some pictures and some video of what's going on at the site. There's been a lot of progress, a ton of work, a ton of progress going on. But just so you can kind of pencil it in, there, we have arranged with the MSBA for a groundbreaking ceremony on Friday, March 22nd. And we're holding, we're blocking out 1 to 4, Andrew. We have an actual time yet?
2:30.
2:30. All right, perfect. So if you could put that in your calendar, we will, it will, the groundbreaking is not obviously as exciting as, as the actual ribbon cutting and opening of the building. It's kind of like a lot of dirt in a torn-down building, but we are going to invite, if students or families want to come, certainly from Lynch, they'll be available to do that. We won't be transporting them to that, but we will have also along the way a topping-off ceremony, as they call it, when the last piece of steel actually gets raised on a new building. They put a little tree on it, and we'll have an opportunity, I think, for students to be able to actually sign that beam, that topping-off beam. We'll probably, I think the goal is to have that beam actually at Parkhurst for students to be able to sign from Lynch. So that'll be exciting. That'll be another opportunity, but, and then certainly the eventual ribbon cutting in preparation for our fall 2025 opening. So we'll keep you posted.
Tonight, it's running on schedule?
On time and under budget.
You said Friday, March 22nd?
Friday, March 22nd.
The weather is not an issue. That's all I'll say.
Yeah.
There are a lot of happy contractors out there.
Yeah.
They are flying along.
It's awesome.
As you'll see later tonight.
That's it for me. That's it. All right. I guess I'll just say...
I have one thing.
Oh, go ahead.
It can come after your remarks. Never mind. I'm sorry.
I don't have prepared remarks specifically. I was going to say, I do walk by Lynch every day and see all of the activity happening there, and so it's, my youngest, who's at Parkhurst, doesn't understand why we're taking the old building down, but he also doesn't have a classroom outside of the areas that backed up. So, but a lot of progress is happening there, and that's great, and I'm looking forward to the presentation. I also had the opportunity to tour the gym with Mark earlier today, and in addition to the need for, for upgrading and repair what is now a very old floor, it pretty much quadruples the program usage of the space and opens up revenue opportunities for us as well and for WinRec and whatnot. So I'm very happy to hear that news as well today. And, you know, I look forward to our meeting tonight, and we talk about sort of a thoughtful process on, on the issue that seems to be on a lot of people's minds. That's pretty much it of my off-the-cuff remarks. Michaela, did you have remarks from the student perspective?
Sure. So we brought a group of students over to Macal, talked about the high school moving up. And then, oh, thank you.
No worries.
Thank you. But yeah, he's also going to have a talk with the parents tomorrow, which we're excited for. I'm also going to that one. And then Student Council's hosting a TEDx event in April, and we're super excited about that, the way students can showcase their research and what they're good at, and it's really cool. We're also excited about that. But yeah, we did carnations for Valentine's Day, and that was a big success. We're in a lot of my, for Student Council, and we donated to the hospital. So, yeah, lots of stuff going on. I was super happy. Thank you.
That's amazing. Is the TEDx event going to happen here at the school or?
Yeah, I'm helping chair the event, and it's happening like on April 9th or 10th, I think, and it's going to have like a showcase of two seniors, two juniors, two sophomores, and two freshmen. They all prepared like their speeches, and we're going to like stream the event, and we like had, got like a license with TEDx too, so like that's official now, and yeah, we're super excited, and they're all like prepping their speeches, and like it's like co-sponsored with Student Council. But yeah, it's really exciting.
So what's your name? Is it TEDx Winchester or?
Yeah, it's on TEDx, like with X, then Winchester, like HS.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like, there's like a whole like website too, if you like want to look it up. It's really cool.
That's awesome.
It's a great initiative.
That's exciting.
Yeah.
Ms. Villanueva, did you have an update?
Oh, yes. I just had an update for the Housing Production Plan Committee. They've had two, two advisory group meetings so far, and the last meeting was just before the break, and they are just working on updating the production, the housing production plan. But the important thing is that on March 13th, they're having a small focus group with renters, nonprofit, community affiliates, et cetera, and they are looking for participants. They're looking for about 10 participants. It is a virtual meeting. It runs from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. So if there is any interest, then please reach out.
To Town Manager's Office, right?
Yes, I was looking. Yes. Town Manager's Office.
Should be on the website.
Yeah.
All right.
Mr. Hoprock, just may I say one of the things, just a public safety announcement regarding Lynch. We, we had some butters approach the EFPBC recently, concerned that kids are scaling the fence at night. This site is at its most dangerous right now. The building is literally torn apart, so steel, glass, I mean, there's no power on site. The police lieutenant in charge has agreed to make some modifications to the, kind of the schedule for their patrol cars, kind of step up patrols, but just if I can relay a message from the lieutenant in charge, it's that anybody who lives around Lynch, if you see something, say something. Please call the police. If you don't, you don't want to call 911, you can call the business line. They just want to be out there and be sure people are being safe. I understand they found some kids on site actually pretty recently. This isn't about throwing anybody in the clink, it's just getting them off-site and talking about what proper behavior should be. So not a place anybody should be right now until the ground opening, or the groundbreaking. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I've noticed it's very, very dark there at night, so it's a big area.
Yeah.
I appreciate the public safety announcement. All right. Next item on our agenda is a consent agenda, and I understand our first item here are the approval of minutes from January 9th, 16th, 23rd, public hearing on the 23rd, and regular meeting. We'd like to pull the January 23rd minutes off just because there's some, you know, additional updates that need to be made on that set of minutes. So, but for the January 23rd regular meeting minutes, all the other minutes that are in your packet are on the consent agenda, along with consideration of acceptance of a $2,500 grant from the Mass Cultural Council for the Psy artist, Soren... 16th, 23rd, public hearing on the 23rd and regular meeting. We'd like to pull the January 23rd minutes off just because there's some, you know, additional updates that need to be made on that set of minutes. So, but for the January 23rd regular meeting minutes, all the other minutes that are in your packet are on the consent agenda, along with consideration of acceptance of a $2,500 grant from the Mass Cultural Council for the sci artist, Soren Mebooms, MiBooms, I don't know how to say his name, residency with grade 11 honors art class at the high school, and consideration of acceptance of a $400 grant from the Winchester Cultural Council for grade 11 honors art class field trip to the Boston Public Library's Leventhal Map Center. Unless there's.
I have a friendly motion to amend.
Friendly motion to amend.
January 9th minutes, page four, the motion and our action on the Morocco SOI. I would just propose that we edit the minutes to say, Mr. Brady made the motion and we voted to submit a statement of interest to the MSBA core replacement program for Morocco Elementary School. So we're really clear what it is we voted to.
Second item.
That's it.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that passes. So now we'll move on to reports, updates and action items. And the first item here is the WPS Elementary Literacy Review Plan update. Dr. Hackett?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. I do want to do one more announcement though, or communication, just a reminder that on this Thursday at 7:50 in the Waterfield Room, we will be presenting our budget or talking to the town's finance committee about our proposed FY '25 budget. So if you are able to make it, that'd be great. And we did get a set of questions. We've been working on those and we are meeting actually tomorrow with the chair of the finance committee to review some additional questions that we had about the questions. So we should be all set to go, but.
Do we know yet? Has FinCon scheduled their public hearing on the budget?
I'm not aware that they have.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. And with that, so I just wanted to take a minute and kind of refresh where we are, where we were prior to the, to the February break and the discussions that have happened since that time and a little bit prior to. We have.
Excuse me, you can't hear actually very well. Can I laugh? Just.
Really? I've never been accused of that before. All right. Okay. I like where this is going.
I'm struggling to hear.
All right, sorry. No, I'll speak up. Just to talk about where we were prior to the break, the discussions that have happened, many of you who are here this evening have been at prior meetings of the school committee, including the, the budget public hearing and the last meeting that we had. And we actually were planning to, and, and the discussion was, and the, and the request was to present what we, we are currently doing with our literacy program. We were scheduled to meet again on February 13th, but I called a rain day. And we did not have school. I was, felt at least the governor shut the state down, so I felt a little bit better about that decision, although it was, it was kind of pitiful. So we were, we had rescheduled the 13th meeting and that's what we're doing. This is not a rescheduled meeting, but the actual discussion on this item has been rescheduled for tonight. However, in the interim, we have spent a lot of time, and I have and would just thank the amount of time that Chair Hopcroft and Vice Chair Bergstrom has spent with me and our leadership group at the central office and principals, specifically really just trying to figure out how to be thoughtful about this process and what this, what this would look like. We have since met with the evaluator, the researcher that we'll be bringing on, and we'll talk, I'll talk a little bit about that tonight several times to just kind of outline the problem that we're trying to face, the, the challenges that we are experiencing and, and kind of what is the purpose and point? And how could this be done in a way that is inclusive, most importantly? Some of the comments that were made tonight are clearly, we have heard before and we appreciate the comments and we understand the, you know, that there's a lot of emotion around this. We've talked about this before, that, you know, part of this from me as a superintendent is it's, there's a piece of this that's even a little bit bigger than literacy. I think it's, it's, it's around trust and, and our relationship with, with the community and how we work together as an entire school community to not just make literacy better, but in the best interests of our kids. So that has been a driving goal of, I think, a factor for me as we've been discussing and others, as we've been discussing what this process should look like. That is an outcome that we'd like to see as part of this process. We have said before that, you know, we go into this open-minded, truly. We are, we have no predetermined outcome as to what this looks like. In the end, we also understand that there's a sense of urgency around this and we understand that there's a timeframe that people, you know, have been talking about this for a period of time. And, you know, we respect that, but we also want to make sure that we are able to hear the voices of everybody. And it was one of the points that was made tonight, and I have heard similar conversations around people not concerned or don't want to speak out from, I've heard it from parents, I've heard it from, from themselves, I've heard it, have heard it ad hoc from staff. So, you know, getting back to that whole trust component of this, we can't work like this, right? So we can't have a staff in a community that doesn't feel safe in the environment to have a conversation or share their ideas or concerns. Certainly the people who, who have spoken here tonight don't, don't share that concern, which has been good. It's been, it's good that many of you have been able and willing to come and speak your mind and, and share your experiences with us, and it's been important for us to hear. But we also know that there's a whole nother set of population of, of teachers out there that have not had that opportunity and of parents, right? So that's really important to us because I think there's, you know, I, I truly am curious about how, what the data will tell us when we go through this process, you know, because many of us are so close to it. And if there are people who are not sharing how they feel or what their perspectives are or what their needs are, then we're missing a lot of information that's important to us as we kind of move forward through this process. So that's kind of where we were, where we've been. And, you know, one of the things that, in making the decisions about going into this evaluation and thinking about tonight, it was important to, we've, I'll speak for myself. I've gone back and forth on whether or not we should be presenting to the public what we currently do in literacy, because there's certainly a lot that we do in literacy. We've made a lot of actually changes over the last several years as well. And I've opted and felt it was important in conversation with both Mr. Hopcroft and Ms. Bergstrom and kind of internal leadership, that my concern around that is that it, I don't want to appear defensive and I'm concerned that us having that presentation and talking about that might be perceived as us not being open-minded and willing to listen to the entire discussion through this process. So I've opted not to do that. I know that there are some who may be here tonight expecting that presentation and I apologize that that's not what tonight is for me. What tonight is for me and for us is to really just give an overview, an update on where we are with, with entering into this evaluation. What else? We have spent a lot of time, we have spent a lot of time listening through the month of February. I have been to all but VO and Lynch parent associations at this point. I have, we're gonna be at Lynch, I'll be at Lynch tomorrow night and VO on Thursday morning. Have had really good discussions, I think, with parents about just kind of taking them through this and our thinking and our, about this evaluation and where we are. Have had a variety of comments and many of which was, were also interesting because it was school-specific and their children in their school and just comments about how they feel about how wonderful our teachers are and how their kids are thriving in the environment that they're in. And so that's been helpful. I had scheduled to meet with all staff in person on February 13th, but again, that date did not happen. So currently looking to reschedule those in-person meetings. The best opportunity I have for that would be based on our calendars is March 12th. But in the interim, I'm considering trying to figure out if there's a way to do some voluntary kind of Zoom meetings or just to try to start that process a little sooner so that I can hear and, and help people understand what it is that we're thinking and, and get some feedback and input from them as well. So there's been a lot going on. We don't want people to think that, that we have been at a standstill. In addition to that, we actually have engaged with the collaborative, the Collaborative for Educational Services in Western Massachusetts. There's a group I mentioned earlier. We have a principal researcher who will be coming on board. This person is not a literacy expert. It was very, I was very, for me, it was important that we didn't have a literacy expert doing the research design and trying gathering information and feedback and input on where people are. The, you know, the researcher would be informed by others in terms of some of the specific questions, but this really is a study about our current situation, how people are feeling. And, you know, and again, in the interest of trying to not be biased and be open and curious, really felt it was important to have the, at least the lead person be someone who really isn't in the field of literacy specifically. They are, they are a professional researcher. So, and they're working on designing that study for us. So with that, I can go to the first slide, please. And I've already made some of these points, you know, the initial request and, and what we were planning to do on the 13th was that. And now we, you know, we are in a different place. So, you know, again, I think, you know, one of the keys for, for us and for, as we go through this is that we want to make sure that we're, we're providing a safe place for people to, to give us their information and, and share their perspectives and experiences. We talked a lot about, and we have in, in meetings with the researcher, the importance of confidentiality of information and, and having the, at least the survey information be anonymous. They will be the keepers of that information. The, the surveys that are put together, there'll be a survey for both teachers and for parents and caregivers. That will be sent by them. The data will be collected by them and it will be, and those responses will be anonymous. So in an effort, and because all we can do is the best we can do, right? There, there'll be gonna be people who are gonna feel like they're still nervous about speaking. But we felt that, you know, we really wanted to emphasize working with, with a third party in, in this collaborative, to have them take control of that piece of it because we want to make sure that to the extent that we can, we can say that people should feel safe if they've not felt safe in speaking up and, and sharing information with us. So that was a key component of that for us. And, you know, as we move forward and go to the next slide, just to, you know, a few other points to make and just to be really super clear. And I think the first point is an important point and what we shared with, with the collaborative with the researcher team is that, you know, this is an acknowledgement from leadership here and speaking on behalf of leadership here. And I know certainly for, speaking for Mr. Hopcroft and Ms. Bergstrom, I haven't had extensive conversations with the remainder of the committee, but you have, they have been engaged enough and involved enough along the way to know that this is really us acknowledging that we need to strengthen our early literacy program and that this is both a, really a critical priority for us and it's also an urgent priority. So I don't want there to be, I want people to be super clear of the commitment to do this work. And I understand that there are, there are those who would and feel that we should have and just should make a decision on certain components of our curriculum, move forward on other potential programs and curricula. We, I understand that and I respect that. And I know this, you know, this may not be where people want us to be in terms of a process, but if we were going to do any kind of curriculum work in any content area, this piece that we're doing now is really the critical first step. It's mapping out where we are and hearing what the taught curriculum is, what happens when, when teachers go into the classroom. We know the resources we have, but how, how are they using them? What do their literacy blocks look like? How do they feel about the materials they're using? What supports do they feel? Those questions are a critical part of really mapping out and understanding our current state. So, but I, again, just want to make sure that I underscore the fact that we recognize that this is an important priority. And we understand also that, you know, people, we're, we're trying to push on this process being done efficiently, but we also don't want to jeopardize the integrity of the process that we're gonna be going through. So just also be clear, if you could go back one, please. I'll tap you with a trigger finger over there. That the focus of this evaluation is on tier one instruction and tier two, in-classroom general education curriculum and instruction, as well as interventions for struggling learners. This is not tier three, which is our special education, generally special education program. We did, if you recall, some of you may recall, we did do, and it was prior to my arrival, a, an evaluation of the language-based learning program K through 12. And that actually was done and completed at the end of.
January of '22.
January of '22. I think that the report, yes, okay. All right. I'm not gonna question you on dates. So that was already done, that was committed to by, by the school department and this, mainly this school committee that's sitting here now. As part of that process, one of the things that we walked away from or one of the recommendations was to look at hiring a special education supervisor for our special education programs, which we committed to through Esar Funding. We posted for that position, I believe in the summer of '23. That position has been open and unfilled since that time. We have made multiple efforts to, to fill that role. We've made outreach and contacts with, you know, with organizations and people that we thought might be able to help us. At this point, to, to this date, we have not been successful in filling that position, but we are committed to filling it. And we feel we, right now, without going into detail, we feel like we're in a good position, that we have really a very strong possibility of filling that role for the upcoming school year. So it'd be a July 1 start. That position itself is not just for language-based learning. That position is for all of our special education district-wide programs that we, as we know, we do have programs at both the Lynch School and Morocco and Ambrose. So it's important for us to, and our focus is really on elementary, but it's important for us just to also recognize that we have other programs that really need this kind of attention. But obviously it really came, came out of that language-based learning evaluation. So we'll stay tuned for hopefully was, for some good news and within the coming weeks and months on that. That's it. Okay. Next slide, please. And I can't see this from here. This is, just wanted to outline really where we've been since 2020. If, if people recall, it was the spring of 2020 where, when the pandemic hit and we shut down school completely across the state, across the country. And the first two weeks of that shutdown were the best two weeks of my professional career. There's nobody around. It was like a sabbatical leave, but it ended very quickly and got into very difficult challenges of trying to figure out how we were gonna bring our students back to school. So the 20, the 2021 school year was the year that we were remote and hybrid. It was prior to my arrival. And just to kind of put this, some context around the timeframe of this. In 2020, and I'm not gonna read through all these pieces for you, and we'll make this, this PowerPoint available, but there have been several things that happened even prior to us returning in full, but in, again, prior to my arrival. Hagerty Phineamic Awareness Instruction Materials were purchased and piloted. In, in '21, we, the, the department put together a screening team to, to, to select a universal screener. In, in April '21, the Department of Ed released the guidelines, dyslexic guidelines, and then the department selected Dibble's eighth edition in June of '21, which would have been just prior to my arrival, as I said, in July '21. And then at the same time, the, the school department was completing a language-based review and that date is not right according to Ms. Nixon, and now I'm recalling that you are correct. So that was the following year, that would have been '22. And just, you know, by way of just kind of context, you know, DESI released the approved screen, a universal screener list in, in 2022 and actually did not provide guidance on that until June of '23. So the, the school department has been on, I, I think, in my perspective and also my experience elsewhere, this was a slow start with the screener, the universal screener and those requirements for a lot of reasons. And, you know, but I, you know, I think that this, this timeline looks very familiar to me and it was an important time. looks very familiar to me, and it was an important timeline to put Dibl's into place. So also in, in 2022, UFLY was piloted, which is a phonics, phrenemic awareness program. And then this year, it has been introduced more broadly. So, and now where we are is in February through June of 2024, we are in the process of conducting this literacy evaluation. That's my wait time, it's the best I can do, okay? So we have, we have been working with the-
Dr. Hackett, can I just do one question on the last slide?
Sure.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
In terms of the UFLY, is that, this year, is that available to all teachers K to two at all of our schools?
Yes.
Okay.
They all have the kids.
Thank you.
So we have partnered with the collaborative for educational services. They are a well-established collaborative, like the collaboratives like SEEM and other collaboratives around us that you may be familiar with. They do provide special education programming services for students who cannot be, their needs cannot be met within any district. They don't provide for us, but that is one of the many things that they, that they do. But they have a broad reach. They do really a lot for a collaborative. They, the work they do is pretty impressive, and it's not just within the state, but it's also, also regionally and nationally. They do these kinds of studies. They, they support and work with school departments who are looking to do a variety of things, whether it's organizational planning or programmatic review, like we're doing now, or program startup. They are a well-established and reputable organization. We felt it was good to go with a collaborative as it was, we didn't want to, we felt it was important for us to stay away from, or to try to go with a public entity and really try to keep the process, again, as clean and as, as pure and unbiased as we possibly can. So we've spent quite a bit of time with them, and in that process, we've developed, or we have worked with them and they have developed some, some guiding questions. So on the next slide, and I'm just going to read the bold, and again, these are guiding questions, these are preliminary. The next step of these questions will be to work with a design team, which I'll talk about on, on the next slide. The design team, and I've mentioned this before, will be made up of both educators as well as parents. We'll try to do, our goal is to make sure that every school is represented at the elementary level. Also try to keep in mind the balance of, you know, this is a working group, and it's important for them to be efficient in this work. They'll work directly with the researchers in developing the survey tools as well as the, the, and you'll see in a second, but the, kind of the in-person interviews and kind of focus group questions. They'll be handling all the data, and they will be updating the design team on a fairly regular basis, they'll be working directly with them. So the, the initial guiding questions that, that we're starting with is, one, are, what conditions does the district create to ensure that teachers are able to deliver instruction that meets the needs of all students? And then under that, I'm just going to read these quickly, because I think that they are, they're quite, I mean, they're all relevant, but for the school community specifically and people in the room, what literacy-related policies, practices, procedures, programs, or curricula are in place in the district, including student and teacher supports? And then what are teachers' perceptions of and experiences with the district's literacy resource, resources? What challenges are particularly salient for them? And where do they need additional support or capacity? The next guiding question is directed toward parents and caregivers. What are their perceptions of the district's ability to support student literacy? And while I'm just doing it, I'm just going to keep going. What are families' understandings of the district's approach to literacy, which is really important and a key component of this, is, and how are those approaches, how have those approaches served their children during their time in, in the Winchester Public Schools? What are families' priorities for the district's literacy efforts? And how do families' experience, experiences differ depending on their children's needs and family background? Again, these are guiding questions, and those, the bulleted questions underneath the main questions are, will be, you know, in part used to develop the actual survey tool and instruments, as well as the interview instruments. And finally, what, what does existing data suggest about where the district can direct support? So really, two areas, what does assessment data reveal as challenges for students in the district? And what does the assessment data reveal about the challenges faced by, by our selected populations? By that just meaning students who have just, just different set of needs or experiences or backgrounds. So those are the guiding questions. On the next slide is just a, kind of a graphic on the, on the research design framework. You can see at the top, the, the inclusive design team, the collaborative and the research team will, will work directly with that team to finalize questions, to review methods and, and finalize methods and select methods, and to eventually generate recommendations along the way. They'll be working with the, the collaborative will be bringing in some, also bringing some specialists as well to outside as needed. For example, in the data review process, they will likely be bringing in some support for that, for that piece. Then underneath you can see that, you know, these are the main elements. So the family survey, really looking for broad participation in an anonymous way, listening sessions that will be for families and educators as well. Educator survey, which again will be anonymous and collected by the, by the collaborative and not held by us. Interviews, which will be depending upon how those data come together and what we, what the collaborative and the design team learns from that, will kind of really direct what those interviews would look like. And then, you know, again, the existing data review, which is actually, has really kind of already started. We've been working with the collaborative in providing them data that they are already beginning to collect and, and to, to start to review. And then finally, just to provide kind of a timeline, and this is actually fairly consistent with what I've put out before, but we, we are already in the process of reviewing existing data. We'll shortly be in the process of doing administrator reviews, and again, this is a collaborative I'm speaking for. The educator survey would be targeting sometime in April, early May, and then the listening sessions will kind of run concurrently or begin even sooner, March through May. Administrative, administration of the parent caregiver survey, the, the target for that is March, so shortly. And then the listening sessions for parent caregivers, again, March through May. And then really kind of a presentation of findings in that May to June timeline. We've been super clear that we really are hopeful that the, the final step of this would be in mid, late May. They've been super clear that they're concerned about that timeline in terms of just making sure that this process is done well, and that they really are doing, that they are able to do and handle and cover the things that they need to cover to make sure that, you know, whatever we come away with are data that are valid and reliable and useful, more importantly. So as part of that, in this discussion, is, you know, that we talked about with them, that we want to make sure that we're providing interim updates along the way. Certainly the research design team will be involved in regular meetings with, with the research team, but, you know, we've got to figure out, you know, we don't, this isn't about sitting and waiting until the end to provide updates to the school committee and to the community and to our staff. So we are committed to try to figure out a way, when it's, when it's appropriate, to try to share data and provide update and status updates for how the process is going. I'm being very selective in my, in saying that I really see this, in the end of this is a presentation of findings. We have not asked for the collaborative at this point, and this could change through the process, because, you know, we could learn more, the design team may guide this in a little bit of a different direction. We've not specifically asked for recommendations, we've asked for a presentation of findings to, so that we understand clearly as best we can where we are. I am obviously imagining that, that there's going to be some kind of, you know, there will be a next step with this, wherever we land, but not knowing where we are is, is really making sure that we, we focus on that first, or giving everyone the opportunity to provide us input is, is really the key piece of this. So with that, I'm happy to try to answer questions.
Questions to the committee?
It's a lot, so appreciate your patience. I wasn't that good.
I can see the wheels turning.
Make a high-level comment, if you like. I think, you touched on this in your opening remarks. I think it's terribly important that this process, as it unfolds, builds that safe space, establishes a sense of trust and respect. And at times, that may require some anonymity. I hope it doesn't, but this is sort of the first time, many of us, the way our agendas have played out and the confluence of this with the budget summit, this is the first time many of us have had an opportunity to talk about this, well, at least since '21 or '22. It's certainly following the Globe article. So I was really troubled when I hear parents or the community use words like retribution. Somebody feels they can't do something because they fear retribution. So we don't send people out to the schools to break kneecaps. So I don't know what that means. I don't know what that means. I'm hoping that's not real, I hope it's not pervasive, but I can respect that somebody may feel that way. I just hope that that's not, hope that that's not real. So I think, I think you've mapped out a really solid process, and I support it. That study you referenced earlier, it was focused more on the language-based learning program, and it, I think was initiated in the spring of '21 by ICCD. They're the Integrated Center for Child Development. That was a very lengthy report, it was almost 80 pages. So I was taking notes on that recently. Because what really struck me in that report, it speaks to the culture that I feel like we should have, it speaks to the culture that I hope we don't have. I'm just going to share a couple of statistics. And as you said, this was a vertical study, so this was K through 12. Eighty percent of the teachers surveyed felt they always or most of the time had access to the resources or materials they needed to teach reading and writing. The other 20% said sometimes. I'd like it to be 100%, but that's pretty good. What was so fascinating to me is the same question went to parents. 10% of parents said they felt teachers had access to the materials they needed, always or some of the time, just 10%. 25% said sometimes, 30% said never. So as a school committee member, how, how do I process that? My question is, so how can that be? I care so much about what the teachers think, because they're the ones with boots on the ground. I care so much about what parents think, because we're the ones picking up kids from school or hearing about how the day was. But both can't be true, is my philosophy, right? Both can't be true. So what's true? There was a, there was also a quote in that report that really struck, struck me, and it speaks to the need of administration to be supportive when it comes to communication. A teacher said, "Where we need the most support from administration is in dealing with the demands and requests from families. One thing that needs to change is better communication with parents from administrators." And if there's a role the school committee can play in that, you know, sign me up. This really resonated with me. It feels like our professional judgment is called into question more and more often, even when the data supports our finds or our ideas. It feels like we're doing more and more to appease families, even if it's not what we believe is in the best interest of the student. So again, like, both can't be true. So I read this and I see real frustration that I want to do something about. I hear all of you, and it's real frustration that I want to do something about. So I think the process that allows that safe space, nobody should feel retribution, whether parent, administrator, teacher. We just got to get it all out, and I can't wait to see kind of where we land. I mean, there's a lot more I could say, but that I felt I had to say, because there is a, there's a disconnect here, and there has been for some time. But I, maybe my last thought, though, is, is I thought the process that we went through and the report that we got, although much more focused, was a good process and gave us some really helpful and valuable information. So I'm hopeful, you know, where this will lead us.
Yeah.
So in the absence of other people speaking, I will, I will chime in. Thank you, Mr. Nixon. You, you speak wise words, I feel, and it resonated well with me. You know, you, you talked about trust, and I do think there is a breakdown of trust between the community and the district. And I think that having a, you know, being very thoughtful about the process and having a very inclusive process and listening to the concerns in the community that you just raised, whether it's our educators who feel a sense of retribution, or parents who feel that they're being, you know, iced out of, out of decisions or whatnot, that we find a way to be, which I think we have struck a good balance in this, in this proposal, that we, we find a way to be inclusive and create a safe space, and some of that safety is around anonymity, you know, that, that, you know, I'm employed by these people, I can't tell them something. So having a third party, you know, with, you know, a trusted third party, you know, manage that data and have us not have personally identifiable information, but instead have, you know, aggregate findings, I think is a good way to do that. You know, building a lot of, you know, collaboration and, and community and educator participation, whether it's in the design team, whether it's in the, the surveys, in the focus groups, you know, having it be a really collaborative effort and try to really build that trust. So that really resonated with me. You know, I, I think the question of what's true, you know, you asked also, and, and that's really at the core of this. You know, we've believed in, you know, continuous improvement, we, we say that, we, Dr. Hackett demonstrated that, you know, in this area of literacy, but in other areas, you know, we are continuously looking to improve what we do. We're all here, parents, educators, staff, committee members, we're all here to help all of our students, you know, get the best education and, and be, you know, really achieve all that they can. So the substance, you know, getting that right is just, you know, it's just, it's just so important. And, and embedded in that are, and I think that the thoughtful approach, again, gets to, you know, equity issues. You know, there's been a number of concerns about who gets what, and, and that's, those are very valid, you know, are, you know, does where I live, you know, affect what I get? Does what my needs are affect what I get? You know, so having a, an approach that in many ways is blind, you know, but, but it really lets us get to the substance of, of, you know, what is the current state? Because that's the other thing. I, I've heard a lot, and it's been difficult, because we can only talk as a committee here, yeah, so we can all have individual conversations with district leadership and, and the vice chair and I, you know, have our weekly meetings with Dr. Hackett, but, but we can't all, all talk as, as a group, and, you know, and so, so it's hard, you know, to, to, you know, to have this conversation, but, but there are a lot of issues embedded in there. The other piece that, that we didn't touch on so much is, you know, we're really being open, and, and we ask everyone to be open, you know, you know, we have no preconceived notions of where this could land, and, and nor do we, you know, have a specific or preferred solution that we want at the end of this. And I think that that's really important, I think, to the success of this process, that people be, you know, open, share their personal experiences, don't, just for, for the, for this process, don't advocate, just really share data so we can really get a full picture of what's going on, because if the output of this is a significant change, it's going to require a significant investment, and we need to show that we've had a very thoughtful process to get there. And, and so I think that's, that's the other piece of this, is, is let's, you know, let's really look at this, let's really understand what the, you know, what's happening now, what's been happening, you know, what needs to happen, and, and do it in a way that hopefully restores, you know, trust. I know this is not just a Winchester thing, it's, it's a much bigger thing, the breakdown of, of trust nationwide, but, you know, let's, let's try to- But, you know, let's, let's try to make this work better here. Anyway, I'm, I'm rambling now on, on my soapbox. But I, I've spent countless hours with, with these two and the, the team and many, many, many different conversations that I've been a part of. A few, Dr. Hackett's been involved in many, many more with individuals in the community, with groups, with, you know, with PISC, with parents, with educators, et cetera. Many, many considerations have gone into this, and, and I assure you, no one is taking this lightly. You know, it's, it's, but, but we need to, you know, I think run the process and, and see what it shows. So I'm very optimistic.
If I could make a, make a few comments. I'm a little surprised that we didn't have our presentation tonight. I was very much looking forward to that. I understand the rationale, but I definitely would have liked to have a fuller picture of what's going on in the different schools, what curriculum is being used, what that looks like, how consistent is it? Is it consistent? Because I, I don't know all these things. I, I know my one child's experience, and I hear from a lot of different parents that have concerns. We've heard from a lot of different parents that have concerns. So I, I do think that that is something that we need to articulate clearly and as soon as we can. I, I don't, I, I do disagree. I don't, I don't think that would interfere with our process if we talk about what we do do now. I think, you know, that, that might help some folks understand what we're doing. I guess, secondly, you know, Dr. Hackett and I have had this conversation many times over his tenure. I certainly have my own concerns with the units of study curriculum. I've, you know, we've, we've had the conversation many times. When are we going to replace it? How long are we going to keep it? How many years have we had it now? You know, there's a reason that schools don't keep their curriculums for 10, 15 years because they need to adjust, and the times change, and they need to have new curriculums. They need to get new materials that are updated, that have new research, new science behind them, new techniques. And I appreciate, you know, that we've brought on the Ufly, and I appreciate the, our staff who made that happen, right? That, that was the work of our staff, as far as I understand, they made that happen. And I think that's been a great addition. I think that's what people are looking for. So I think the, the motion that I am going to make, I'd like to make a motion that we, as a committee, commit to replacing the units of study curriculum. And I would say as soon as possible, knowing that we can't commit to replacing it next week or next month. I can't commit to replacing it by an exact date because I know that that's entirely unrealistic. The funding is a piece that we would need. But I do think that we need to make a commitment to move on from it. So that, that's the motion that I'd like to make, that we, as a committee, make a commitment to move on from the units of study curriculum as soon as possible.
So we have a motion. Any seconds?
To move on from. Any other detail you would put to that? Or could you say that one more time?
Sure. I, my motion is for us, as a school committee, to make a commitment to move on from the units of study curriculum as soon as possible. And to, to clarify, Mr. Nixon, thank you, to move on from would mean to purchase a different curriculum and implement a different curriculum in our elementary schools.
I think you just undermined the entire process that Dr. Hackett set up.
Well, I, that was not my intention. I just wanted to voice what I thought would be a good next step.
I think the next step will come when we go through the process that Dr. Hackett's presented. Because I'm not even clear, Mr. Brady, that we still use units of study in our classrooms? How extensively, to what degree?
I'm not either, and I was hoping to find that out tonight, but it seems.
Well, I think that's what the process is intended to do.
I'm, I would disagree that we probably don't have a good sense of how often units of study and to what extent it is used in our classrooms.
Well, from what I'm hearing from parents in the community is that teachers are using things that we're not aware of, that teachers feel like they can't use things they want to use. So that would indicate to me that maybe teachers aren't necessarily using units of study in the classroom today. And I think that if we're going to build trust with parents in the community, with teachers in the community, that we need to go through the process where we find out what is being used in our classrooms today.
And I still think we can commit to putting a new curriculum in place, whatever that curriculum may be.
So can I offer? I think we will get there.
I do too.
I really do, Seamus. I feel like it's a stronger statement if, if there's a completion of the sentence, which is, we want to pivot from X to Y. And here's why. And here's what it's going to cost. And here's why it's important. And we're not the only ones that understand it. We've been talking to the finance committee about it. We've been talking about the PTOs about it. We've been talking to PISC about it. We've been talking to the select board about it. So, I mean, just, just think about the energy and the work that went into all-day kindergarten, which seemingly was really obvious about what the value of that was. Is there anybody here who would describe that as an easy process? That was not an easy process. This is a much more complicated issue. It shouldn't be, but I feel like it is complicated just giving the variable sort of sources of information, and people may be conflating with, you know, what they're reading in one state versus another, or what's happening in Massachusetts versus Winchester. I, I am supportive of Dr. Hackett's process, and I believe you're right, Frank, that it will require a significant investment. And so that doesn't mean it won't get done. But I think we need to build some support as we go down that path. But I am confident we will get to the place where I think Mr. Brady wants us to get. I, I personally, not speaking for the committee, I think we're going to get there.
Well, nobody's here to speak for teachers, right?
Right.
So I, you know, and I appreciate, Mr. Brady, your, your comments. And clearly, I'm not surprised by your comments. You and I've, as you said, have had, have had a lot of conversations about it. But, you know, my concern is that, and this is me, but really trying to make sure that people understand that this process is important, that there is a breakdown in communication and trust, and we can't have discussions in the way that I think we should be able to as a school community. We don't, we haven't heard yet from anybody. And I just, I just feel like it would just seem to me that there could be some really unintended consequences of making a decision on the front end of this process before we go through it. And I'm not suggesting that we're going to go through this and find out that everyone loves units of study. I don't know what we're going to find. But I think that, you know, I could imagine that there may be some teachers and some literacy people in the audience, or imagining that they're watching on WinCam for some reason, that that might, that comment or that action might be very unsettling for. Because with, with that commitment, we haven't answered the question about, one, what are we currently doing in the extent that we are doing it? And two, what would even be next? So I would, it's your, clearly, you've made the motion, and it's for the committee to, to consider. I would just wanted to express that. I, I feel that the importance of going into this with no predetermined outcome and being open and curious about what it is that we're doing and really getting the information. Because I, and I'll say this out loud. I, I was concerned about presenting to the committee and the public what we're doing in literacy to find out through this process that there's a wide variety of what we're doing in literacy that we're not even really aware of. Because I, I do believe that's true. I think that, like any school system in any content area, there is the stated curriculum, and then there's the taught curriculum. And we've had, you know, a, a huge amount of staff turnover over the last couple of years. I actually did have that number at some point. Ms. Kirby, did you?
Staff turnover?
Staff turnover. How many new teachers have we had at the elementary level?
In the past three years?
Yeah.
So it was 14.
So, I mean, that's fairly impactful. We're coming out of the pandemic. We, we, there were large instructional changes that were made from the pandemic. I just don't know that we really do have a good handle on, and I'm not just talking about literacy, but I'm not sure we really have a great handle on what exactly are teachers doing it? How are they doing it? How do they feel about it? Especially if we're hearing that people don't dare to have those conversations and let us know that. I just, I don't want to silence that, those voices, and I don't want to, I don't want to bias the process that we're going through on the front end. And, and that's my, my view, so for what it's worth.
Mr. Brady, I feel like by making a motion like that today, if there are teachers that are still using units of study in their classroom, do you think any of them would come forward and say that they were still using units of study if this committee has made a motion to eliminate units of study? I think it is a complete, it, it would taint the information, as Dr. Hackett said on the first slide, that we would get back from teachers. And we are not with our teachers in every classroom every day. And not everybody in this room can't be either. And I would like a process that lets us find out what teachers are using, how they're using it, and why they're using it, that creates an environment for them where they feel safe and open to share that. Because if we don't know what they're doing when they close their door, then, then we're no better off than we are today.
Again, I, I'd be very surprised if the staff in the schools, the leadership in the schools doesn't know how their teachers are teaching or what they're teaching with. And I, I don't, I disagree. I don't think teachers would be hesitant to tell us what they were using. They, they know what they're using.
Have you told them not to use something here today in this room?
We haven't told them not to use it. We've committed to move on from it when we can. And that's what districts do.
I agree with Mr. Nixon. I think that's the end of the process, not the beginning.
Again, I'm not determining what we will do next. I think we should have recommendations that come out of the process. It didn't necessarily seem like we were going to have recommendations. I've said what I think is important. I, I think we've had this curriculum.
I don't think anybody's arguing whether it's important or not.
I said, I, I said, I've said what I think is important. I, and again, I think we should move on from units of study. We've had it for an extended amount of time, generally.
What you mean by "we've had it"?
The district has been using it for, I don't know the exact number of years. No, no one seems to be able to, you know, I'd love to know that.
Do they use it in your son's classroom?
I don't know.
Exactly. And that's what this process is to find out.
Okay, but I, I would hope that if I asked my son's teacher.
Because a curriculum sits on a shelf in a classroom doesn't mean that is what a teacher teaches with every day in their room. I have also heard that we provide Ufly and Hagerty to teachers in our classrooms. Are we saying they're not using those?
No.
Are we saying they are using those?
I believe teachers are using those.
How do you know?
Because I have heard from multiple teachers and multiple parents.
Because you've heard from hearsay from multiple teachers and parents, this process is to collect data to find out what our teachers are using, how they use it, if they're able to utilize, utilize the phonics and phonemic awareness and evidence-based programs that we have provided to them.
So do you think we should continue using units of study? Do you support it going forward?
I think that this, the, and I am not going to take a position on units of study for or against it right now before we go through this process.
And see, I, I have an opinion on it, and so I'm, I'm happy to express that opinion. And I understand that you don't have an opinion on it.
All right. Ms., I, I think I know where Mr. Nixon and Ms. Burks are. Ms. Wilson, I say, do you have any, you don't have to weigh in, but do you want to second this motion? I'm seeing it. You, you don't have to jump in and.
Do you have anything to add?
I just don't want to.
I would just say that I appreciate the process, the use of the third-party cooperative, the timeline that Dr. Hackett has described, the presentation that will be coming to us down the road. I appreciate being able to talk about what's happening across the district. And also about the effort to be inclusive of all different people and staff in the district. So I think it's important to have an open conversation about this and to just think carefully and thoughtfully before we make a decision. So I wholeheartedly support the process.
So, I, I mean, we, we clearly, you know, there are trust issues across our community and, and, you know, and here as well. I, my personal view is that this process is perhaps the most important thing, most valuable thing we've done as a committee in my time here. Not just because of the literacy issue, but I think that's very important. But I, there's trust issues in other areas as well. And I think being able to lead with data, we talk about being a data-driven organization, and we've made great strides in a lot of areas to make a lot of data more transparent. But, but I, I agree also with Mr. Nixon that, Mr. Brady, we may very well, in just a few months, get to exactly where you want to be. I'm, I've been, I found it very difficult on the committee, and just in life, when people come to me with the solution first, before we can go through, you know, where are we, where are we trying to get to? And, and, you know, and what is, what are the implications of that? In this case, you know, I'm not prejudging where we get. I'm certainly not holding on to, to anything that we have. I, I have a kid with dyslexia. I, I, I care a lot about this issue. I, I'm concerned about the equity issues. I'm concerned about all of this. But I'm also concerned that we land this thing. And, and I know that one of the outcomes that a lot of people are hoping for is a really big lift. And I think that having a really thoughtful process that really crosses our Ts and dots our Is is the way to get there. And, and, and I'm not saying that's where we're going to get. I don't know where we're going to get because I'm not prejudging where this should end. But, but I'm, I am curious too, because I, I hear about Hagerty and Ufly and, and, you know, the district providing PD and providing materials and all this. And I hear the community saying that we don't offer any of this stuff. And, and I'd kind of like to know that stuff. And I'd kind of like to say, you know, as Mr. Nixon, I think, said, you know, we want to go from here to here. And this is what's going to, you know, involve in terms of, you know, not just money, but time and professional development and, and whatnot. And so, you know, I, I also, I, I'm totally with you on the spirit of, of the motion. But, but I feel like it's putting the cart ahead of the horse and that we should go through the process, get the data, and go where the data tells us to go. And, and that's how you do continuous improvement in my mind. So I also don't second it, which means I don't think we have a second. But I appreciate you having the bravery and maybe the safe enough space to be able to, to share that here.
Despite it being, say, undermine the process by making the motion.
Right.
Maybe that's what people are talking about, but.
Or maybe they're talking about other things, too.
All right. Let's keep our.
Can I make one other comment just about safe spaces? Because sensing we may be drawing to a close on this to move other, onto other agenda items. We do want to be data-driven. I was thinking to myself a lot over the past couple of weeks. I think I'm, I'm data-driven, not Globe-driven. The Globe article clearly was responsible for a lot of interest and attention of the community. It's not a bad thing that we're here talking about this. I want to just give a shout out, and I hope I don't make her feel awkward, but to Jen Ellen Emma, I want to say thank you because so many districts were approached by the Globe that wanted access to their schools, and they said no. They, many of them said they don't even have a statement. They have no public comment. I want to thank you, Jen, for taking so much time out of your day to make our schools available, to make classrooms open to this reporter, and to have an environment where teachers felt that they could talk. I think we're a standout in that respect. And I was not happy with some of the criticism that's been directed to Dr. Ellen Emma. I think really unfair. think really unfairly. But I would just, my last comment on the Globe, and I'll never talk about the article again, for those who are especially frustrated with the five of us or with the superintendent on not being prepared to address this because we quote "knew" the article was coming out. I would just like those behind me to know, none of us knew the article was coming out because the Globe hadn't been in our schools the week before. They had actually come to our schools last year. And I'm not being cute when I say last year because I mean fall of 23. They were actually here last school year for an extended period of time, lengthy interviews. I wasn't aware that they were here. So it really did catch me off guard, the, the article, anyway. Um, and I think that that's important. Some people understand that. I think there's some real frustration, like, why has it taken this long? You knew this was coming. I had no idea that article was coming. But I do appreciate that, that Jen Ellen Emma felt, you know, she could, there was a sense of trust there, right? And that, that there were classrooms that could be opened up to a reporter to ask questions, that other districts said, we don't want to talk. As uncomfortable as some of those consequences have been, I think you did the right thing, and I appreciate you for that. Thank you.
Yeah, and I, I would just build on that to say that, um, I think every one of us has heard many different perspectives, um, different things from different parents, uh, things that, that, um, may or may not, um, match up with our belief about what is actually happening in our classrooms, um, or what our, our administrators or educators believe or are doing, um, or their intent. And, and I don't, I don't think any of us mean-spirited. I think people are just concerned and they're looking at their experience and, and, you know, sometimes things extrapolate a little bit, and you, you know, as you've said several times, the two things can't both be true. Um, and, and I think that really underscores why we need to be working from a common set of information. We're not working from a common set of information right now. And, and, and it's been, you know, weeks and many, many hours of, um, conversation about how do we take everything we've heard? How do we take the fact that maybe teachers do feel there's going to be a sense of retribution if they speak? And how do we give them a safe space to do that? And how do we deal with the fact that, you know, maybe we're teaching units of study in all of our class, or maybe we're using UFLI integrity? You know, you know, we, we just need to have a common set of information. And, and I, I believe that smart, well-intentioned people, you know, that have the interests of our kids at heart can figure out what the next step is if we're working off the same page. And, and so, you know, I applaud Dr. Hackett and, and the, um, you know, the outside organization that he's been working with and district leadership, um, you know, who have put in many, many hours, you know, you know, really figuring out how to do a process that, and, and, you know, talking to teachers, talking to parents, and, and taking input from each of them. I've seen how we have conversations with people, and then that shows up in, okay, we need to tweak this in order to, to help this person feel that, that they can be part of this process. Um, you know, there's a, a finite timeline on here. You know, you know, obviously, you know, this notion of do we just keep kicking the can down the road indefinitely? You know, it's, it, there's a, a finite timeline, but, um, of, of, yes, whatever, two or three months, you know, um, coming up. You know, it takes time to do research, it takes time to talk to people, to have interviews, to, um, to really get the data. So, anyway, I'm, I'm.
Can I, can I just add one last thing to that, to Mr. Hopcroft? I just think that, um, as a committee, as a community that involves parents and students and teachers, that there has been long requests for a process like this that gives people the opportunity to openly speak their mind about how they feel about literacy, how they feel about their family's experience about literacy, how teachers feel about their experience of literacy in the classroom. And I think this is a process that both gives people the opportunity to do that anonymously and through conversation. I think that the interviews that are part of this process are just as valuable as the anonymous part of it, because it's only in being able to sit down and have a conversation with somebody that you really understand how they feel. No more would I judge any person in this room for any petition that they have signed over the last three years, as to the quality of parent they are, the quality of educator they are, the quality of anything else based on that, than I would through anything else. And the implication was made that members of this committee may have prejudged people based on that. And what I judge you are is advocates. That's what I see when I see a name on a petition. You are all advocates who feel strongly about something if, if you have signed that. But what we need to do is we need to create an environment where people are able to speak their knowledge and their beliefs. There are a lot of educators in this district with deep experience in all kinds of subject areas, literacy among them. And we have some incredibly talented educators who have spent many years working on professional development in literacy, and I have sat in many of those sessions that talk about many of the things that you have been presenting today. And what I need as a school committee member is to be able to hear all of those perspectives, not just the people sitting in this room, but all the parents in the district who are afraid to speak up in this forum, because this is an intimidating forum for a lot of people. So I need to be able to hear from them. I need them to be able to ask questions. We need to be able to learn from each other. And I challenge everyone who has come here tonight, and anyone listening on TV, to be the people who bring reason, respect, openness, and curiosity to this. Don't shut off a process before it starts. We all share the interests of supporting our teachers and our kids. Nobody, I don't know anybody who has ever been with a child in a classroom who looks at a child who can't read and wants to continue doing the same thing with them tomorrow that they did yesterday. We all want our kids to be able to read, just as we want them to be able to do math and be able to be good citizens who go out in the world. I also am a parent of a child with a dyslexia diagnosis, and I don't speak about that because that is my own child's story to tell. I understand this as my experience as an educator, a special educator, a parent, a school committee member, but I don't bring that to this table personally, because I have the interests of all the teachers, all the parents, and all the students in this district in heart when I sit at this table. I hope that's what this process does.
Um, yeah, so in, in closing on, on this issue, maybe I'll say, um, you know, I, I just hope that people, it's, it's a choice right now. Um, you know, we can embrace this process. I do think it will lead to the best outcome for our kids, um, or, or we can, you know, not be happy that we didn't vote, um, a new curriculum tonight. Uh, but I hope that people will, you know, a lot of people have asked for an opportunity to be heard, an opportunity for, you know, more transparency, more data, more trust, more collaboration. That's really what we're trying to do here. And, and, you know, I just hope that the community chooses to embrace that process. It's not going to be an ongoing thing. Um, you know, it, it, we will, we will have a result, um, at the end of it that, that will, um, you know, I think give us a much better, um, place to, to make decisions from. Um, you know, because we all, we all want to have what's best for our kids. No one is sitting here saying, let's hold our kids back. So I, I would just hope that people choose to embrace that and, and, you know, whatever's happened in the past, please, you know, understand that we're trying to do the best thing that we can here for everyone. So hopefully that will, will take.
Could I make one other motion, um, just to try something different, um, see if there's interest? I'm wondering if I could make a motion that the school committee commit to piloting at least two new literacy curriculums next year? Because again, I, I don't think we can replace our literacy curriculum like that, but I think, you know, UFLI and other things have come out of successful pilots, and I think if we could commit to do that, I think that would show a really good faith effort on our part to look at what the opportunities are, obviously not committing to using any particular curriculum, but let's try something. If you just do one thing, that's not necessarily a pilot, because it's like you only have one option. So I would make that motion that we commit to piloting at least two literacy curriculums next year, and that the cost of that would not necessarily be significant. Having participated in various pilots over the years in various school systems, I've found them to be helpful, and I, there's usually teachers who are quite excited to volunteer and be part of the pilot. Um, and it's a good way to get a sense of whether those are good options from our teachers, because if we don't, if we don't pilot anything next year, then it might be an entire two or three years before we make any significant changes.
Second to the motion? Not hearing a second on that, and I, I suspect it's a, a similar objection of that's maybe coming at the end of the process. I would say that, that whether we were to, to approve a motion to say that we would pilot two things, um, coming out of this process, which we'd have to determine when we came out of the process, or just piloting two things when we come out of the process, you know, isn't substantively that different? It's just that may or may not, we may know what we want to do by that point. Um, yeah, and anyway, unless anyone wants to make a second.
I will, I'm not going to second it, but I will make a motion I think we can all agree on. I actually would like to make a motion that we include elementary literacy evaluation just as a standing item on our agendas for the next three or four months, and, and I, I think we'll be talking about it frequently, but we can put that on there. And if, if it's a meeting where we know we're not going to have anything to say, we can deliberately take that off. But I'm, I'm expecting we'll get some periodic updates on how we're doing in the process, right? And we've, we've made a decision to add certain items as a standing agenda item in the past, so.
A second to that.
I was going to say, happy to second that one, Mr. Nixon.
Yeah, I, I'd move we add elementary literacy evaluation as a standing agenda item for the duration of the plan.
Okay, you got two seconds on that, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Thank you, Mr. Nixon. All right. Um, moving on, the next item on our agenda is consideration of approval of the Winchester High School Latin Club trip.
So this is all Latin to me. But we have Mr. Mahoney here tonight. Uh, he's got a doubleheader, uh, to talk about the Latin Club trip, which you have previously seen as part of your packet, as well as the program of studies for next year. He's got it, Tony.
Nice seeing you again today.
Thank you for having me. Uh, start with the easy, the, the fast conversation. So our Latin group is a very small group, but very passionate group about their Latin studies, uh, classical studies as well, with Mary Elizabeth DeCamp, who's been an educator here for a number of years, and she's essentially the Latin program. This has been a field trip, an overnight field trip for years, but we haven't actually done it in about five years because COVID shut it down, then the Latin, two years after that were, um, on Zoom, and then last year was just a day event. But this is a big event for the Latin program, and it is 18 years running, I believe, that Winchester High School has participated. And it's just, uh, 16 students. We'd like to have an, you know, run it again, go back to how things were. And so I'm here to represent the Latin group, Latin Club, and Mary Elizabeth DeCamp. Take any questions you might have.
I'd make a motion to approve the Winchester High School Latin Club trip.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Easiest thing we've ever done.
Nice job. Please give her our thanks for making it happen.
She, she loves it. She looks forward to it. And every year they do, it's a competition, and they do very, very well.
All right, program of studies?
Program of studies for 2024, 2025. As always, say this every year, this is a living document. It changes, it ebbs and flows throughout the years. We add classes, we subtract classes. Sometimes we're sad to see classes go, sometimes we're, you know, super happy to see the classes that we're adding. This year is a little bit of a, um, I'd say not, not significant changes, they're more static than anything, but the world language, uh, a little bit going back to Latin, I suppose, world language has the largest change. Uh, it's to represent the proficiency-based learning, um, program that we're, we have with world languages. And so the names of the courses are changing. What we do in the course is not changing, how they're being taught is not changing. I think we're, we're cutting edge, we're always ahead of the curve. Uh, we're actually, you're going through, um, interviews currently for a director, uh, as our world language director is retiring. And it was happy, you're always happy to hear what other schools are doing, and then you can compare and contrast a little bit. Um, and I, it's a program that we're very, very proud of. I'm particularly proud of the world language program at Winchester High School and the middle school as well, because that's the feeder program. But we are, we have fully moved into a proficiency-based model, and the names, Spanish II, Spanish III, Spanish IV, no longer really hold relevance. And as we like to be ahead of the curve, um, we examine what we're doing. We have a good program, but how can we make it better? And the middle school, you know, a lot of students can take two to three years of a language in middle school. It doesn't make a lot of sense for them to take, say, two years of Spanish and then start at Spanish II when they're in high school. It'd be better if we were able to call it what it is, is intermediate Spanish, and then be able to rate it as a novice or intermediate level as they move on, um, instead of the Roman numerals. So a few, a few schools in the state of Massachusetts are doing this, we're sort of jumping in with them. We initially wanted to do just a full name change, just change the names so it, it is more accurate, uh, a more accurate description of what we'd like to do, but we thought that might be confusing to go from Spanish II to intermediate Spanish, or Spanish III to intermediate Spanish II, um, where it looks like you're actually taking a lateral move or a step backwards. So now we're, um, we're doing what we traditionally do, which is a slow year after year rollout to make sure that, uh, transcripts are not changed, courses that people took 10 years ago, if they come back to get their high school diploma, they haven't changed. And it's just a, uh, more measured reflection of what we're doing. So starting next year for the incoming ninth graders, those, and just for the level ones, so Spanish, Spanish I, Italian I, um, Mandarin, well, Mandarin, it won't be Mandarin, Spanish, what am I thinking? What language have I missed?
It's a good problem to have.
It is.
French, Italian.
French, thank you. French, Italian, Spanish, those will be the, um, the changes that you'll see. And then over the course of three years, we'll roll them, roll them as the students roll up. It doesn't affect Latin, because Latin is a different program unto itself, um, in terms of not having a, essentially the proficiency model, but, um, that is the biggest change. So, and before I go any further outside of world languages and the largest change in the course of studies, are there any questions?
It might be a question more for Jen than you, Mr. Mahoney. With the proficiency-based model, when the students come out of eighth grade into ninth grade, maybe for both of you, are they automatically then placed in a class? Because before you could choose, like, French or French honors at ninth grade. Is this just a straight placement out for proficiency-based, or can you still choose the honors level even if that's not your proficiency?
That's a good question.
You still, you still choose your level, but your, um, the intermediate goes on for, like, a long time, as is natural with language acquisition.
This is a, this is a, it's a great question that'll lead into something that I should present. When it comes to, um, the course names, you'll, you'll never get to an expert level. So you, you'll have honors and you'll have college prep, but there is no expert level while you're still learning a language in high school. I think we'd all say, we'd all agree that maybe some, some of us don't always, as native English speakers, we don't always speak at an expert level. Um, and as you're learning a language, you're, at least at the high school level, you're always considered intermediate. It could be intermediate high, it could be intermediate advanced, uh, but you'll not progress farther than that. You're still learning the language. To be an expert in something is a significant step up.
But you can still choose that level even if it's not the proficiency you rated that? Does that make sense?
Well, so there's, like, like any of our classes, there's an override, you know, there, there's a conversation, there's a recommendation. If a, if a student, if a student is a native speaker and they come to us, we can give a, we can give a competency exam to just say, hey, you know, where do you think you, where do you think you might be? Uh, or if you come from a different school district, we want to know, do you have comparable skills or not? Should you be in this level? Should you be in that level? And just putting students where they're, um, where they're pushed, but also comfortable at the same time.
They're going to be the most successful.
Yes.
So I do have a question. On the flow chart, Dennis, that's now on page, what's it, on our document 61, and by the way, the pagination should probably be checked when you're all set, because I think you've got old page numbers from the previous document, but.
We always change it after this meeting.
Yeah. Um, you've got a, this flow chart.
He can't help himself, Mr. Mahoney.
You never know what to expect from us.
World Language Department courses. I'm just going to grab a box. Interme, inter, intermediate. Intermed, which I guess is intermediate, intermediate I, college prep, French, Italian, Mandarin, Spanish. And below it says NH3-IL1. What does that last line mean?
That is an excellent question, and I should know it, but it's, I'm drawing a blank.
You are, Mr. Nixon.
What? Page 61?
It could be novice high, intermediate low, I, but I would defer to the language department.
So because I stumped you, and I'm stumped, I was going to ask if this chart goes into the handbook, the schedule of courses, can there be some like explanatory text down below that just says?
The key at the bottom?
Absolutely.
Yeah, just something that tells me what it means.
You know, and it's another good segue there, Mr. Nixon.
Okay.
Our charts are all created by different departments.
Oh, yeah.
And there are, you know, there are visual learners, there are people who like things mapped out a certain way. It's a discussion, an internal discussion that we will have for next year's course of studies, if not sort of work on it this year. In terms of having, and again, this is the classic, I'm going to try and fix one problem.
Yes.
And create new problems, because we'll probably go with a standardized chart. That'll work for your concrete sequential, you know, eyes and my concrete sequential, but the abstract randoms will say, I don't, I don't understand this chart. So we're going to do our best.
So since you went there, in honor of our former math director, Tom Haver, who I think created the first flow chart that went into like a schedule of courses, there was a lot of negative space. And you could actually see, oh, I'm going to do this in eighth or ninth grade, and this is how I get there. This is a pretty dense grid on page 61. And my first impression actually wasn't that it was a flow chart until I looked and saw the little arrows. So I appreciate that you'll get there someday.
We will.
And Mr. Nixon, you may notice that social studies has a completely different flow chart.
Much more artistic.
Keep going, Mr. Mahoney, just keep going.
Wait a minute, is this a job for Jen Lovatino?
The problem also is that there's, nobody's, it's not a standardized form. Levels are, there's different amount of levels and there's different things that flow to it, so.
There's different pathways to success.
Yes, that is the correct interpretation of that, though. That was, it is novice high, it is novice high, intermediate low. It's the kids who are moving right between moving into intermediate.
So just broadly, my observation is when we see alphanumeric stuff, it should be really clear what it means. And if it's not, I think that's okay, as long as we have something down there that explains it.
That's an easy fix, a chart larger. So that is the biggest change. The rest of the changes, if we were just to open up to questions, since I presented to the subcommittee already. You know, we're looking at some descriptive changes, some word changes here and there, new courses, comedic literature and performance in the English department. That seems, it seems like it should be a real interesting course. Well, also offering the human geography, AP human geography in social studies. That's ideally, that's a course that's open to a number of students, a wider spectrum of students than most of our APs have been traditionally. So that's a course that I'd like to see a lot of students who have never thought about trying an AP attempt to try. Because it certainly comes, you'll need certain skills for writing and reading, but it's not like a math-based course or a language-based course that are skills built upon years of, you know, other skills. So that's an interesting course, as is the modern Middle East. I think that'll be rife with a lot of questions and debate.
I do have a, I have a math question.
A math?
Math question.
Okay.
So, and this is something Jen, you and I have talked about not that long ago. So once upon a time, ninth grade was really geometry. We made that pivot that Tom Haver was helping us lead towards stag, right? So are we, my impression sort of recently is that's still pretty heavily geometry. Is that just, is it just right? Is that mixed just right? Is that weight towards geometry right? Is that, are we still making some changes? Are we, are we moving in a way that maybe there's less geometry and more of the other three?
I think the focus has been to move away from geography, geometry. I've been in a number of the stag classrooms, and I see a lot more algebra and statistics than I ever see in terms of geometry when I visit classrooms, as well as technology. So I would say that, I don't know the percentage with, if it's 25, 25, et cetera. But I would say that it's probably less weighted towards geometry in that, in those classes.
In ninth grade?
In ninth grade.
Yeah, I'm asking specifically about that, and I'm not saying what the ratio should be. I'm just sort of curious if we've gotten that spread to the place where we think it should be.
It's a good question. I think I can ask Dr. Offen if we actually track the actual percentage of what it is. I'm giving anecdotal evidence, I don't see a lot of, I don't see a lot of geometry when I visit the classes.
Okay.
Is that across all grade levels? I guess you were talking specifically about ninth grade?
I'm talking specifically about.
Ninth grade, 10th grade, I do see a lot more, you know, finding the angle of this and that.
Yeah, I'm asking specifically about ninth grade, because I'm understanding anecdotally, it's still very, it's heavily in geometry. But again, I'm not, I'm not saying that's wrong. I think, because what we're doing today is still different than what it had once been. Yeah.
Any other questions?
I'll just say I'm happy to see Mandarin I has survived to live to another schedule of courses at the high school. I hope we have to hire more teachers someday to fill that class.
I am blown away when I'm in the Mandarin classes, seeing the non-native speakers, how comfortable they are with the language, how easy they use it, I'm blown away by it.
That's great.
Mr. Mahoney, this is, I'm sorry, this is just a question about transition eighth to ninth grade with program of studies. Could you just refresh for us really quickly? Because, you know, like some, I know how it happened when my kids were there, but I feel like, is it starting earlier to have those conversations with families? Is it still in the same place that it's?
Well, I mean, for free advertising.
I know you were just at the middle school.
So I was at the middle school the Friday before vacation, which I think Mr. Lynn set me up when he said, how about the 16th? I was like, yeah, sure, no problem. And then I looked on the calendar, you know, having an auditorium full of eighth graders the Friday before February break was, was a risk, but it went fine because the kids were great. Tomorrow night is the parent or family, eighth grade family presentation, which is a similar presentation. But we, I think about two or three years ago, maybe, maybe pre-COVID, we started the process, the course selection process maybe a few weeks earlier. Not significantly, though. I can, anecdotally, my sons are going through their course selection in their high school right now as well. So I would say my second or third year, we started giving the, my second year, we pivoted and we started giving the schedule of courses to students within the last week of school. The students in Winchester High School previously showed up the first day of school, just nine years ago, and were handed their schedule. This is, these are the courses you got. Now you got a week to go to guidance and figure out whether you want to get in or get out. And we pivoted about seven, six or seven years ago, where the last week of school, you got your list of courses, not your teachers or when they meet, not the schedule, but the courses that you are guaranteed that you got. And so that pushed everything, that has to push everything back, because it's really guidance. And Ms. Conas, who does yeoman's work with the schedule, and the directors to mix and match and move in, and move all the pieces and make sure that, you know, we're getting it done. So the earlier we start, gives us enough runway in order to get that schedule out by the last week of school.
And are you finding, how are you finding the kids feel about that, the eighth graders? Is it, is it helping them to start thinking about transitioning to ninth grade?
That might be a better question for Mr. Lynn.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know, that's a good, I don't, you know, with the eighth graders, I, we'll see them, we'll see them again in June. Then we see them again in August, and we started our ninth grade transition, our new student transition program two years ago, which Anna Paradise runs. We're very proud of that, they're doing a lot of work in Wind Blocks. There, it's, and I think the, the process is earlier, but what we've done with all that time is significant.
Right, that's what I was.
Whether, whether the eighth graders enjoy thinking about classes in high school, I, you know, that's, it's a great question for Mr. Lynn. I think, sure, asking what class you want to take in February for your ninth grade September is a, is a big ask for kids to vision. It's a long time for kids.
But there's a lot coming in between. So I guess for parents who've experienced it before, that this is just the beginning of the process to transition, that you guys do a lot of handholding and support and, because I remembered you started that, the program, but I hadn't seen any information about that.
We even have a website on, it's on the high school website, you know, like new to WHS. And not all the dates are there, but there's a Q and A, there's ways to read the schedule, it's pretty robust. Again, credit to Anna Paradise for that program, it's one of the reasons why we have her.
That's great to know, I'll point people there.
Point people there.
All right, any other questions?
I'm happy to make a motion to approve the program of studies as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mahoney, you're welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting. There'll be no judgment, however, if you decide to walk out a door.
Could not move faster.
Thank you.
You'll be back here soon enough.
Good night, Mr. Mahoney.
Have a good night. All right, the next item of business is the 24, 25 school year calendar, consideration of the calendar.
Pretty straightforward. It is really, it looks a lot like this year, except some dates have changed and shifted based on how the calendar falls. We had, had some conversations with the WEA about the possibility of starting prior to Labor Day with a couple of different scenarios. But there was, I think, a hearty conversation and some, I did receive feedback from a lot of teachers on it. But the, in the end, it was a very close decision. I mean, essentially what it would have required was the WEA agreeing to do a side letter of agreement with us to essentially waive the contract language as it, as it is right now about when we can start school in and around Labor Day. So next year is another year where contractually we cannot start before Labor Day. But that kind of, it just really didn't come together. I think it's important for the committee to take action on the, on the calendar now, so that parents can know what it looks like for next year.
Does the language say may or shall? Can we not start before Labor Day? Is it?
Correct, I've been down this road.
Yeah.
With heart, with tears and heartbreaks.
Every four years I think about, what is that word again?
I keep rereading it, hoping it says something different, but it doesn't.
Or just comment that, having heard from a lot of folks, if that's something in a future negotiation that can be looked at, that would be of high interest to a lot of people.
There may be interest with the WEA too. I thought I was, the survey was, that they did was, I think was interesting and eye-opening, so.
Probably makes it hard for them to sort of direct membership to if it's May.
Yeah, I believe, I think we'd have to have some definitive language.
Yeah.
And would we still be able to have the second page?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you.
Well, that's not on the one we're seeing tonight.
That's why I'm, that's why I'm.
Yeah, we'll include that as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
That's been very much appreciated.
It's been good feedback on it.
Since we added that, I have not heard of any concerns of conflicts with any particular days.
Yeah, I think it was a great compromise.
So I appreciate whoever is tasked with doing that and putting that together.
I also like that you got rid of Saturdays and Sundays to make it a little more legible.
Yeah, thanks for the notice. Messed around with some different formats, but just that was.
I mean, unless you want to start going to school on Saturdays and Sundays.
Um, no, not particularly.
Folks have any questions? Comments, concerns?
So what are, what are you looking for, do you want a motion to?
I mean, if the committee's comfortable just doing a motion to approve it tonight, that would be great. If it's a first reading and you just want to recognize this as first reading and you want to take another crack at it at your next meeting, it's okay too. It's just we're getting kind of late.
I'm okay making a motion to approve this developed calendar for next school year. Just the request that you, can you come back to us with that back page that just?
Yeah, sure.
That shows the religious observances so that, I mean, on one hand, people are going to want to see this, but I think when we put it up there, like Mr. Brady was just saying, our current calendar, it's a two-page document.
Right.
There's a good bit of work there to go chase all those dates down.
I'm not so sure Aaron doesn't already have it done.
I was just going to say, just out of curiosity, did this go to policy or somebody first to make sure we don't have any overlap for holidays?
Uh, we've, we've, we've gotten pretty good at checking it.
Okay.
Yeah, and I say, when I say we, I mean mainly Aaron, and then I look at it too.
Okay, because I'm happy to make a motion to approve it tonight as presented if.
And just to clarify, because I don't think we actually said it in this conversation, then the start date for students would be September 5th.
Yes.
And the final date of school would be June?
20th.
20th, pending.
With no snow days.
No snow, well, with no snow.
With no rain days.
With no rain days or snow days.
In climate weather.
In climate.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, that's okay, I made the motion, so.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item of business is consideration of superintendent recommendation to reappoint Mark Scott and Chris Nixon to the FPBC.
So my understanding for the process is that these seats are up and available. And I would recommend that both Mr. Scott and Mr. Nixon be reappointed to the FPBC. And I believe the select board is acting on Mr. Scott.
It's a joint appointment, that's right, they're going to act on March 10th.
Okay.
Any discussion?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I was just going to say, I certainly support it, I'm just curious, we don't, for the joint appointment, were there other applicants or was he the only applicant?
So the spot was, the joint position is advertised, the select board advertises that. Also, the moderator appointments get advertised when they're open. Mark was actually the only one that responded. The advertisement was on the town website, and Patty used indeed.com and got nothing. So even that was, you can find a lot of interesting stuff. Actually, Lori Kirby is using indeed.com, aren't you?
That's correct.
For some volunteer positions.
And I think, and I think Mark has done a great job and is very, very qualified. I just more wanted to know what is the interest in, you know, that particular committee?
So nobody responded to that, but I will just, if you don't mind me taking that opportunity to say, Mark is incredibly engaged and he's one of a handful, I mean, everybody's really prepared. This is a great committee, people are prepared for the meetings, they ask great questions. But for some individual members, there's a heavy lift on the side. We have a number of working groups that evaluate the architectural, civil, mechanical, electrical drawings, all the envelope details. And we did it at design development, 60% CDs, 90% CDs, we're talking about hundreds of drawings. Mark volunteered for every one of those groups, and he gave me pages of questions and comments and responses. He is, he's, he's doing the job of three people, actually. And just as importantly, he has a great attitude. I mean, he's a problem solver, his communication skills are really good. And the path to get to solar was a most circuitous and lengthy one, but through that, you got to see some of him and his demeanor, which really serves us in the community well. So I enthusiastically support him coming back.
He has a background in school buildings too, doesn't he, Mr. Nixon?
He does, yeah.
Yeah, so he's got a lot of incredible experience and depth of knowledge. Like you said, with the solar, my interactions with him on the solar were just outstanding. I'm glad that he's coming back.
Yeah.
He's in it for the money, mainly, I think. Like you all, like you all are.
Thank you, I didn't mean to interrupt, I'm certainly voting aye.
I think we all voted aye already.
I think we did, yeah.
Aye. Excellent.
Mr. Nixon, any open positions on EFPC?
There are a couple of moderator, so the terms expire March 1st in certain years. There are a couple of terms that are coming up. I have spoken to the town clerk, town clerk's aware of that. She, as you know, has been pretty busy with early voting and elections and everything, but absolutely is, it's on her radar.
So there are positions that people would, potentially be reappointed to? Or, I mean, everything, people can apply anytime a position's open.
Yeah, so what I can, there are at least two positions whose terms are expiring technically May 1st, although, as I think you all know, our practice in town is, you know, if we're a little late in making an appointment. I mean, I was actually last appointed like on May 18th, so I, my appointment was a little late.
Yeah.
Those folks will continue to serve, whether they intend to stay on the committee or not. And that's a conversation, so the town clerk will reach out to individual members and just say, your term is up, and letting you know. Even if they'd like to continue serving, my understanding is the moderator still wishes to have that, that position advertised. And so I believe that will happen, it'll be open for, you know, a couple of weeks, and folks can opt to put their name back in the hat.
Not looking to get rid of anyone, just, I said, not looking to get rid of anyone, just hoping that we continue to have the, you know, an outstanding FPBC as we move forward with Lynch and hopefully towards Morocco.
Well, and it is, it's a three-year commitment too, so if folks feel they, this is a good time to step aside. I mean, on the one hand, this would not be a good time to change a whole lot of the committee, because we're about to dig a big hole in the ground, as you're about to see. But on the other hand, we have kind of wrapped up. you're about to see. But on the other hand, we have kind of wrapped up a stage of the project as we're transitioning into a new one. So if there may, if somebody chooses to kind of step aside, that's certainly their decision, but everybody on the committee is doing great work. And not just the meetings that you can see on Wind Cam, there's all sorts of sort of working groups, and Andrew and Frank are engaged with a couple right now on some site issues. I think that's going very well. So, yeah, it's just, it's a very high-functioning group, and it's a pleasure to work with all of them, actually. Related to that, because we are now getting into construction, we are, we are kind of transitioning our EFPBC meetings in a way where we're going to try to, we meet twice a month. We're going to make a real effort to focus on the Lynch project at our first meeting of the month, and that at our second meeting of the month, it will be for just other stuff. Now, we will have bills to pay for Lynch and maybe a couple of minor check-ins, but we're, we're really going to try to focus on Lynch at the, at the top of the month. So just want to let you guys be aware of that.
All right, speaking of Lynch, next item is Lynch replacement project update.
Bring up the website. All right, so this is the website update, and if Mr. Marin cares, this is hot off the press. This was actually put together this afternoon.
Can you go full screen on the video?
What's that?
Oh, can you go full screen on the video?
I think, yeah, I think if you, what's that? If you click play and expand it.
Perfect.
I don't know how loud that's going to be. Literally, literally today, the building is coming down until a little more than halfway down. Don't mind me talking through, I'll narrate this as you go. So Andrew, can you pause it just for a second? Okay, so the contractor's strategy here is, you're looking at this almost from the bridge off Horn Pond Brook. So what the contractor is doing is they're doing their excavation and their footings, the base foundations, on what I'll call the east side of the site. And they're moving from east to west towards Pond Street. When they get to Pond Street, and there is foundation work happening there now, but there's a lot to happen, when they get to Pond Street, then they're going to turn around and start putting steel up. So foundations go, if you're looking at the site plan, we're familiar with, foundations are going from right to left, and then steel will go up left to right.
Can I ask a question about that? Because I was curious, because I saw an aerial picture of these. Do they, it struck me that they usually pound steel into the ground, I always thought, down to bedrock, and then they do the foundation.
Those steel-driven pilings would be necessary if you don't have the load-bearing capacity of the subsurface, but we don't have that issue here, so.
So we have enough, it's solid enough here that we can, despite the floodplains and everything?
You're looking at basically concrete-spread footings, and you might even see some images of the rebar as we, as we go through this.
Yeah, see some of it on there. Do those go very deep then, or is that just?
The footings, yeah, they go, they go pretty deep, yeah. Yeah.
I was just surprised not to see the steel, but I guess that's for wetter areas.
Just, it would be for a different project and different geotechnical conditions, but I think the neighbors are probably happier not driving steel pilings, but sometimes you have to.
Absolutely, yeah.
Anyway, you can go ahead if you want to.
What else to sound?
We lost the sound of construction.
Do we need the sound?
That's okay, I was going to say.
So now what you see is that, those are some of the foundation walls that are being framed up over the footings. This is really what I wanted you to focus on. This is the new outline of the gym on the right. This is the back of the school. Just appreciate how close the back of the gym is to the fields.
Wow.
I mean, it's right there. So one of the goals of the project was to engage with the Lynch fields, and we are. This was February 5th. This is the northwest parking lot off of Pond Street. Here it is today. All that excavation is done. So the stormwater retention structures are in, the footings are in for the ground-mounted solar canopies. This is a pan across that parking lot. Break Builders is accelerating this lot construction so that they can use it for contractor parking and a lay-down area, just a base coat, like finish it, finish it. The back of the school off Brantwood, you get a sense of how the demolition is going. As I said, more than half of the building is down. They, similarly, they started, they worked from right to left, coming across the front of the building, and they turned around, and now they're working from left to right across the back. So they're gonna, the last thing they will take down is the, what used to be the old admin wing and where the school committee used to meet many, many years ago.
Chris, is that ledge completely gone? Is that ledge, sorry, is that ledge completely gone then? When we were at the gymnasium and we were looking towards the field, there used to be like a good eight-foot at least drop there. Did they get rid of that?
It's, it was not quite eight feet, so.
Felt that.
But it, but it's gone.
But it's short.
I am short.
There was a bit of a hill there.
Yeah.
And that, so this will be the last piece.
Well, because even in our drawings, we have like a, we have, you know, there's, it shows a path sort of going down the hillside to the back playground. Is it not that steep?
To like where the Lynch fields are?
Yeah.
Yeah. There's a grade change, but it's not eight feet.
But is it less than it used to be?
I think you, it will appear to you less than it used to be. And the way you will, but here's the thing, the elevation is what it is.
Yeah.
So that delta actually manifests itself in the building.
Okay.
And here's how. Because if you walk in the main entrance of the building and you steer a little bit to the left towards the stage, so you're walking in from the main entrance, you'll find yourself onto the stage, and then you'll look down, and there will be a lower level, which is the gymnasium floor.
The atrium and the stairs.
That's where that, I mean, yeah, there's stairs to get, there's a ramp and so forth, yes. So partly, it looks that way to you because we're, the floor elevation of the gym is lower to better engage with that field. So we're making sort of a transition in terms of elevation within the building.
So I'm thinking for like ADA. So if you come out of the gym, are you coming out level with the fields now?
Not necessarily, no, not level, but there's still ramps that are going to be needed, but well within.
Not the same as.
Well within ADA, yeah.
It sounds, it sounds like if there was, if there was an eight-foot drop, which I'm not.
I made that up. Don't keep repeating it.
But, but you probably have a four-foot drop from the state, which is the main building level to the bottom. So you're going down four feet inside the building.
Yeah.
And then if, maybe it was only a six-foot drop or something.
And you may remember out of the parking lot off of Pond Street, there's that, well, it used to be that asphalt ramp that goes down the fields.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking about.
So we're still going to have a ramp. It's actually going to be longer and wider and shallower, so easier to navigate.
Not as much of a grade.
But that's all, we're also going to build a spot for anybody whose kids play soccer. You're familiar with Ryan Connolly Park off of Cross Street. We're going to put, we're building like a porta potty facility there to support the fields, you know, for use, and so that's how the trucks are going to get back and forth. We have to build a bigger ramp so that the trucks can just get there. So those are going to move from basically the corner of the woods on one side to a much more sort of public and visible area.
I have an opposite question to Ms. Bergstrom's, which is, the building, the gym will be high enough up that, because doesn't that field flood sometimes?
Oh, it's way above. It's way, way above. Yeah. But remember, ADA, it's rise versus run. So you have to, it's a significant horizontal distance before you get actually out onto the fields.
Okay.
We want to, if you click play, hit play real quick. Mike Wise is our DPW drone operator, so he picked up these photos today, which is pretty cool. That was about 2:00 this afternoon, giving you a sense of, you know.
There's nothing zen about the Zen Garden anymore. Yeah.
Is it, is it good to see it down, Mr. Hockcroft, or is it a little bit sad, too?
My, Lynchie at Parkhurst is very sad, although he didn't have a classroom near the sewage backups, so.
[laughing].
Other kids who are closer have been very happy with that.
I think the other thing that Frank and I would just like to share with you guys is, so far, everything's on schedule. I mean, the weather has been great, so if anything, we're kind of moving quickly.
Yep.
Nothing wrong with that. Submittal schedules have been developed by the architect and the contractor, getting no reports of issues there. There are lots of questions that come up in the field around coordination and clarification on things, and there's a process for that in the industry. And I hear zero static, nothing but good feedback from our onsite representative. Tom Finnegan is our onsite representative from the OPM.
Andrew, can you just scroll down just a little bit so we can see the photos as Chris is talking? Yeah, thanks. That's perfect.
Yeah, that was from like, three weeks ago.
Have you heard anything from any neighbors? Any concerns?
I asked that question today. In fact, the abutters who are nearby who are out, they're excited and they're taking pictures and they're giving thumbs up to the contractor. They are happy that this is happening. Yeah, I mean, really, I think the only concern from abutters is just about kids jumping the fence.
Yeah.
And of course, we, the trees that came down, we've talked about this previously, there was a little bit of communication breakdown there. Our landscape architect was out onsite again, like a week ago, and has identified a couple more trees that are in pretty tough shape. I think one or two are actually trees I think the abutters would like to see come down and replaced with something. And we have said as a committee, have we not, Frank, that, you know, our budget is such that if we feel we have the capacity and the budget, we would be pleased to replace. I mean, some of these trees, trees don't live forever, so some of them are in pretty tough shape.
Well, the two groves of trees, the one by the top lot area and the one up by Brantwood, by the road, always concerned me because like, half the trees in there were dead.
Yeah.
And I was just worried about one of those things falling over sometime, but I think they cleared all those out. So are the trees you're talking about on the south side?
There are some trees in rough shape on Brantwood Road, and they actually technically fall just outside of our construction fence. And some abutters have actually approached us and said.
Could that fall inside of your fence?
A truck could accidentally back into that tree, so those are conversations we will have.
Great.
And Mr. Nixon, you're saying there may be some room in the budget to do some tree replacement work then when the, when the project's over to, or some landscaping work to?
So, yeah, so not quite, not over, but let's say it will be fully bought out. The biggest, the two biggest risks.
I should say, building is built when.
Yes. There are two big sighs of relief on the schedule that we're not there yet. The first is what called getting out of the ground. All your foundation work complete, meaning you didn't hit contaminated soils, you didn't hit whatever or something terrible. So that's a big deal. And then there's topping out. Then you just, the risks of construction really start to fall. And that includes buying out the job, you know, a big, a big cost of the project is labor. So when you reach some of those milestones, you can check a box and say, "Okay, that's done. What, what do we have left to spend? What does the cash flow and the budget look like?" We're very optimistic we'll be able to supplement. And our landscape architect has actually just prepared a recommendation that committee hasn't seen it. In fact, I think it only went to our architect like on Sunday. So I think if not this coming EFPBC meeting, the next one, we'll be talking about some of that. But it's not critical path because it's landscape, so it's going to be a while. But we'll talk about it this.
I will say, I find the library picture, this one right here, very sad every time I see that one.
So that's where the school committee used to meet, for many years. And we used to have buckets on the floor to catch the rainwater because the roof was leaking.
Before you, Mr. Nixon, or surely after?
No. I, I had school committee meetings in that room, and I had a bucket. I was there the night we voted to accept MSBA money to replace the roof, and you could hear the drips at the time.
Anyway, looking forward to the new building.
Yeah.
I wonder if Mr. Marin or Dr. Hackett.
I'm glad that it's going along.
What's that?
I'm glad that it's progressing easily at this point for us, that everything's going as planned.
I love being able to see the video of.
What's that?
I love being able to see the video of what's been happening. This really takes you there.
You need one of those live webcams going to watch the, you get the time lapse or whatever.
We actually are today moving the camera from one side of the site to, we had a kind of a site security camera that was up on the kind of pond side. It was towards Pond Street, right, Andrew?
Yes.
And they've moved it to the Horn Pond Brook side where the trailers are. And they were, I saw, the guys were actually working on it today, getting it ready to mount to a utility pole, so that it'll serve kind of two functions. It'll, it'll be a good security camera, but we've actually been trying to find just there like a reference point that's kind of out of the way of construction that might be able to grab some time-lapse photos or something. That would be cool.
That would be neat.
Yeah.
What did I forget?
Nothing, nailed it. It's exciting.
What's that?
It's exciting.
It is exciting.
Excellent.
I'm on tangent.
Yep.
Pretty good on that one? All right, anticipated future agenda items around 7:30 PM, not quite. FY25 budget, capital and program updates.
We'll add, let us see, evaluation is a standing item?
Standing item, thank you.
Can you just clarify, I think I had a conversation with you about, what is meant by capital program updates?
Capital comma program updates, two different things.
Capital comma?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so that could include things like what's up with the gym floor or Mystic School, for example.
For example.
Which hopefully we'll have something to talk about at the next meeting.
And program updates could include things like the health and wellness program that we have new standards for.
Okay.
For example, I think.
We're almost done. All right, future meeting dates, we have March 12th and March 19th.
Motion to adjourn.
And if there's nothing else, we have a motion. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.